Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call the November 3rd meeting of the Columbia County Planning and Zoning Commission to order. If you would stand with us, Commissioner Wilder will lead us in our invitation, and Commissioner Dempsey will lead us in the pledge.
I'll be with us. Hey, Lord, we want to thank you for this day. Thank you for the beautiful weather we've been enjoying. Thank you for all the many blessings you bestow upon us on this great state that we live in. We ask that you look over our law enforcement and first responders that protect us, help keep this community safe. Great place to live. We ask that you look over us as soon as we make our decisions and guide us, and that you give everyone that came tonight a safe ride home from the meeting. All these things in Jesus name we ask. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, with the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just.
Thank you. If I can please remind you to silence your cellphones during the meeting tonight. We do have all five commissioners present for tonight for 100% quorum. Gentlemen, you've had an opportunity to read the minutes from the last meeting. If there are no changes to the narrative, I need a motion for approval.
I'm moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Most to approve carries 5-0. Gentlemen, you've also had a chance to review the agenda for tonight. If there are no amendments to that agenda, as you've seen it, I need a motion for approval.
I'm moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Most approve. The agenda is submitted. Passes 5-0. Before we begin, I'd like to take a moment to clarify that the planning commission is a recommending body to the Columbia County Board of Commissioners. The decisions made on rezoning and variance requests tonight will be forwarded to the commissioners for final action on November 15th, 2022, in these same chambers. If you wish to address the Board of Commissioners at their meeting, see, please see Mr. Douglas, and he will give you a request to speak for him. We don't have that requirement in this meeting tonight during our public hearing section or during our public comments section. If you had something you'd like to address or add for the record, raise your hand. We'll call you up to the desk, and we invite you to take three to five minutes to give us your position, either for or against, in the public hearing section on whatever issues you're wanting to discuss. In the public here, in the public comments section, if you have another issue involving the county, something tonight, or some, another issue as a whole, raise your hand. We'll ask you to come up and, again, take three to five minutes to give us your position on whatever you'd like to have on the record. The commissioners do review both the written minutes and the video from this event tonight. So, again, if you have something you'd like for them to hear, please feel free and come forward. With that being said, we'll move into our first order of business tonight. Mr. Butler, massage operator's license, Island Wellness Massage.
First, here's a request for a massage operator's license for Island Wellness Massage LLC in 694 Low Meadow Drive, Low Meadow Drive, for mobile massage only. All requirements of ordinance, staff recommends approval.
Okay. Gentlemen, any questions of staff? Okay, I'll need a motion. This is not a public hearing. I'll need a motion to approve, to disapprove, or to postpone.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the massage operator's license for Island Wellness Massage LLC. You provide mobile massage services.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Approved. Passes 5-0. Ms. Montgomery, we got information only, temporary use authorization for a construction trailer on Husk Box Way.
Yes, sir. And this was an approval for a construction trailer at 893 Husk Box Way. This is in the Mill Branch Planned Unit Development off Horizon South Parkway, and it is under construction for a proposed hotel. Location of the construction trailer up near the road. We did add a condition that they'll have to remove that trailer before they install the landscape strip, but this was approved on October 24th.
All right. Gentlemen, any questions? Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate it. Ms. Montgomery will stay with you for preliminary plat for Whispering Pines, Section 6.
Yes, sir. This is the preliminary plat for the final section of Whispering Pines off William Few Parkway. This is the location at the end of Georgia Pine Trail, and it is currently zoned Planned Unit Development as part of the Riverwood West PUD. This section includes 115 single-family lots with a minimum lot size of 7,150 square feet, which does exceed the minimum required in the PUD. Setbacks will be a minimum of 25 feet from the right-of-way, seven and a half feet from the side property line, and 10 feet from the rear property line. Sidewalks and street trees are required on both sides of the road, and just over 20 acres of open spaces provided in this section. You did recently see the major revision in regards to the buffer along this property line. The preliminary plat submitted does reflect the conditions of approval for that major revision, and staff is recommending approval.
Gentlemen, do you have any questions of staff? This is not a public hearing. I'm going to need a motion to approve, to disapprove, or to postpone.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the preliminary plat for Whispering Pines Parkway.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve passes 5-0. See, Mr. Butler, file RZ 221003, major plan revision to S1, and this will be a public hearing?
Yes.
Okay.
There's a request for a major S1 revision at 475 Clear Sky Drive. It's industrial. A major revision to add additional industrial uses and some slight modifications to the hours of operation. This location of the property is in the Clear Sky Drive. This is the current zoning. Again, you have some S1 to the east, C3 to the north, also some M1, and then to the west is Ridge Point. Subdivision, which is zone R3 to the south, is Richmond County, and also an aerial view of the property, and also the existing site, and a plat of the property. So, when the property was rezoned in 2018, they had a very specific narrative that basically limited them to only FL Schmidt. So, it was designed to only have them in the building, and also addressing issues with, you know, the development next door with an increased buffer here. What FL Schmidt has found over time is that they're only using about half of the building itself, so they like to add additional uses already to the building. So, the applicant work was staffed pretty extensively to find some uses that make sense in regards to being right next to a neighborhood. So, what they've added is that they've added heavy industrial use, which is a manufacturer or assembly plant, which is what FL Schmidt already is. They've also added warehouse and distribution, which includes bulk storage, distribution of products and merchandise, parcel services, transfer and storage, trailer storage. But one of the things that they've done, though, is they've limited any sort of outdoor activity to only this area here. Again, they do not want to have anything that impacts the existing neighborhood. Again, this is already designed to not do that, so they want to continue to do that with any new uses. Also have light industrial uses as well. Close clothing textile apparel manufacturing, contractor's office of storage. Still, they manufacture all sorts of things. Pharmacy or medical supply manufacturing and woodworking shops. Administration office as an accessory use to primary uses, vehicle repair, so it's the same requirements with outdoor stores only. And again, being very clear that anything outdoor is going to be at the back of the property. One of the things, too, they have revised their hours from 6:00 a.m. to 12:30 a.m. It was originally 7:00 to 12:30, so they've basically gone with an extra hour of operation. Overall, again, these are all uses that are M1 uses that could be near residential properties. They've done quite a good job of buffering this, buffering this development from the residential neighborhood, and have also done a good job of addressing any sort of outdoor activity by putting it all at the back here. The next picture here shows a truck court. Again, it's designed to have vehicles back there and to be used for loading and unloading, but again, gives you an idea of what it looks like at the back, and also the existing large retaining wall at the back as well. With future land use, this is within an unemployment center of the activity centers. Again, that allows for just what it says, employment. That is, it's very much in line with the Vision 235 Future Land Use Map. These factors, staff recommends approval of their request.
Gentlemen, any questions of staff? This is a public hearing. Is the applicant here? Yes, sir. Is anything you'd like to add to Mr. Butler's presentation? Okay, thank you. Again, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, to disapprove, or to postpone.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve file RZ 22-10-03, major S1 revision.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Most to approve. Is submitted. Passes 5-0. And we'll move into the actual current public hearing section of the meeting tonight. Mr. Butler, we've got file RZ 221002. It's a postponed item from October 20.
That's correct. So, one of the things of these next three, they were technically postponed, but they also were not advertised by the Columbia News Times, as we've had to move them due to that factor. This is a request for rezoning from M2 to M1 for 11.35 acres off of Grimald Boulevard, William Few Parkway. Currently, it's undeveloped. Rezoning is to M1 for light industrial subdivision. This is the location of the overall parcel. You'll see in a moment what the area that we're dealing with. There's a location, again, it's basically this little area drawn out in green here. Looks really similar to what's to the south. It's basically a mirror image of that development. There's the current zoning. Again, this section is at M2. Primarily, everything around it is M2, but again, you do have some M1 here and also over here. S1 for a church there as well. There's aerial view of the property, and also the existing site, plat of the property showing 11.35 acres, and the overall subdivision. The biggest reason I have the rezone and all this is they have lots that are less than two acres in size, so we cannot do that under M2, so it requires M1. Staff has no concerns with this from a planning standpoint. There is a concern with traffic engineering that we'll see in a moment in regards to how much traffic is going to be generated out on William Few Parkway. There are conditions regarding turn lanes at that intersection. First, future land use, this is within an open space area according to the map, however, again, it is all zoned M2 and also adjacent to an employment center. This is the one we probably should have, let's modify that open space on the map. But again, the current zoning and also the adjacent activity center, this does meet the intent of the future land use map. Again, staff recommends approval with conditions. The biggest one there are, the biggest ones are from, are from traffic, requires a left turn as there a lane on William Few Parkway, and also prior to approval of final plat, and there is an ability to have a payment in lieu of the construction. There's multiple things that I'm not really going to get into the specifics of that, but basically, it overall requires a left turn. Also describes the minimum paving section of what that left turn lane would be. Please staff recommendation.
Right. Gentlemen, any questions of staff? Is the applicant here? Yes, sir. Is there anything you'd like to add? All right, thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak either for or against this rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve with conditions to disapprove or to postpone.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve with conditions file RZ 2210-02, rezoning from M2 to M1.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Most to approve. Passes 5-0. Mr. Douglas, we got another postponed item from October 20. File VA 221001.
Yes, sir. This is a variance to reduce a setback from 10 feet to 7 feet. This is a, going to, it involves a property at 243 Farmington Drive West. It's about a half-acre property currently zoned R2. This is the location of the property, again, on Farmington Drive West, slightly south of Hereford Farm Drive, or Hereford Farm Road. And again, it's currently zoned R2, single-family residential. This is an aerial of the property. The proposed detached garage is going to go down here near the bottom of the southern property line. If you look along the, if you look along the western, northwestern property line, you can see the trees that have grown. That is an area that will be highlighted on that. The asbill and the plat showing wetland and topographical slope, which are limiting buildable space, which is why the detached garage is proposed to go so closely to the southern property line. This is the existing site, and that is an illustration of the sloped topography that I was referencing earlier near the northwestern property line that is limiting buildable space for the applicant. And this is the plat, again, that hatched pattern up near the northwestern property line, again, highlights that wetland area and topographical slope. This is the asbill, and you can see here noted in the purple ink writing that there will be a seven-foot offset from the property line that extends into the 10-foot setback, and so the variance application has been submitted for the 28-by-30-foot detached garage. It'll just be large enough for the applicant to keep his two vintage cars that he works on and maintains and restores as a part of his leisurely activities and his retirement. If I could go back to that last slide quickly, if, I'll also draw your attention to the front of this asbill survey. If you notice, a couple corners of the house extend into the front setback for Farmington Drive, we, as a staff, have tacked on, as a part of this variance application, that those front corners of the house that extended to that front setback also be accounted for and registered and logged on the, you know, county records. And staff recommends approval with the singular following condition of a revised LDP grading plan being submitted for the construction of the detached garage.
Thanks, sir. Gentlemen, any questions? Thanks, sir. Is the applicant here? Yes, sir. Is there anything you'd like to add to the presentation? All right, thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak either for or against this particular variance? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve with conditions to disapprove or to postpone.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve with condition file VA 22-10-01, variance to reduce the building setbacks at 243 Farmington Drive.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Most to approve. Carries 5-0. Ms. Montgomery, got file RZ 2211-01, R1 to S1.
Yes, sir. This is a request for a rezoning from R1 Single Family Residential to S1 Special for a contractor's office with storage at 5520 Hereford Farm Road. This is the location of the property on the east side of Hereford Farm Road, just north of Columbia Road, and it is currently zoned R1, as are the immediately adjacent properties. You can see down at the intersection, we have the existing planned unit development for the shopping center, and existing commercial zoning on two of the other corners, and the existing church on the fourth corner there. Is the aerial of the site showing the two existing buildings on the property? The driveway into the site, the buildings are at the back of the property, so you cannot see them from the road. These two buildings would be used by the applicants for their contractor's office with storage. They would use the existing house for the office space, and then the existing shop for storage of drywall and other materials. This is the site plan that shows the additional parking to be added for the office building, as well as the storage building and the proposed outdoor lay-down yard behind the building for larger materials. There is a 40-foot buffer shown around the majority of the property, the exception being on this northern property line due to the existing driveway location. The applicants have indicated that they want to keep that existing driveway to minimize having to do any additional clearing work on the site, trying to keep that kind of wooded feel that you saw from the driveway photo. The 40-foot buffer is a pretty typical buffer for industrial uses against residential property, so staff is in favor of keeping that. We do understand the limitation on the existing site conditions with the driveway, but we are proposing that at the rear of the site for the lay-down yard, there is a note on the site plan that that is either a structural or opaque natural buffer. We are proposing that around the storage area that that be both, that the storage area be privacy fenced, and then also have the 40-foot buffer in place for that portion of the property. And there is a condition referencing that. In terms of the future land use map, this property is in the neighborhood's character area on the future development map. This area is intended for protection of existing neighborhoods and development of new residential neighborhoods. Contractor's office does not fall into a residential category, so it is not a use that is envisioned in this character area. The property area is also near the Columbia Activity Center, centered on the intersection of Columbia Road with Lewiston Road and Hereford Farm Road. This is a commercial center. It is intended to provide for compact, walkable development of neighborhood services, retail, restaurants, and other similar commercial uses serving the surrounding neighborhoods. The subject parcel is not within this activity center. The future land use plan does have a provision for expansion of character areas as they develop out. However, this particular character area is not developed out at this point. This is the developed parcel. There is a gas station and the church, but the remaining property in this activity center is not developed at this time, so we would, we wouldn't consider it premature to consider expanding this character area. That being said, there are several examples of rezonings that have been in similar situations. One is the self-storage facility just down Columbia Road, which is also just outside this activity center. It is zone C3, heavy commercial, and was zoned that way in 2017. The self-storage facility is also a light industrial use under county code, and the recommendation for approval was based on how the facility could be designed, based on the shape of the property, the narrow road frontage that then widens out behind, so you could very effectively hide the use from the road, and had ample space for buffering from the adjacent residential properties. We have also approved quite a few contractor's offices in residential areas. Mostly, these have been out in the rural and rural neighborhoods areas. So, we've had Cardinal Lawn Care out off Burke's Mountain. We've had Dixieland Walls off Lakeview Drive, and Murphy Brothers Construction off Cobham Road. We also have approved an S1 for a landscaping contractor in the neighborhood's character area that was Pebble Creek off William Few. Typical conditions were primarily related to buffering of the site to ensure that these operations did not disturb the adjacent properties. In this particular case, for this parcel, we are dealing with a limited number of full-time office employees operating during normal business hours from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. that is setback from the road and is buffered from the surrounding properties. If developed and operated as proposed, and as they would be required to, since they are requesting an S1, and that is site plan and use specific, it is likely that they can operate with minimal impact to the adjacent properties. Staff is therefore recommending approval with the conditions that a privacy fence be installed around the lay-down yard, and that it present a finished appearance to the adjacent residential properties, that the buffer is a minimum of 40 feet between the privacy fence conditioned above and the residential property lines, and that all of the natural buffers remain undisturbed, with the exception that they can add additional plant material. So, basically, they can't take anything out, but if they want to add additional landscaping within that space, that would be acceptable. And that concludes the staff recommendation.
Thank you, ma'am. Gentlemen, any questions of staff? Okay, this is a public hearing. Is the applicant here? Yes, sir. Is there anything you'd like to add to staff presentation? All right, thank you very much. Again, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve with conditions to disapprove or to postpone.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve with conditions file RZ 22-11-01, rezoning from R1 to S1 for a contractor's office.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Most to approve. Passes 5-0. Mr. Douglas, file VA 221101, variance to sections 90-53 and 90-144.
Yes, sir. This application for a variance concerns 356 Paces Ferry Road. It's a roughly a third of an acre-sized lot, also zoned R2 for a single-family residential. And as you just stated, it is a request for a variance not only to building setbacks, but also to the county requirement for front yard fence heights. This shows the location of the property north of Wheeler Road on Paces Ferry Road, near the intersection of South Bel Air Road and Wheeler Road. It shows the zoning. This slide shows the zoning of R2, again, single-family residential zoning. This is an aerial of the site. This aerial is actually predates the existence of the carport and the fence in question, and so we have site photos for you here in a moment that will illustrate those. If I could draw your attention back to the shed at the rear of the property, that will be the subject of a condition that we have attached to this application to put on documenta, to put on county record that that shed reaches into a drainage and utility easement that the county holds, and so we just wanted to go ahead and make sure you guys viewed that on the aerial while you had a chance. This is a copy of the plat for the property. And then this is the asbill survey, again, noting first and quickly the shed at the rear of the property, but more importantly, the carport that is illustrated here to be at its nearest 2.1 feet from the property line, this property line on the left side of the screen, and at its farthest 2.5 feet from the property line. Additionally, we would draw your attention to the dotted line that surrounds the front yard drawn up on this asbill. Initially, when the application came in, it was strictly for reduction in the setback to account for the carport, but upon review of this asbill and site visits, we discovered a fence that is represented by that line surrounding the entirety of the front yard, all the way up to Paces Ferry Road's right-of-way. That fence is the fence in question. Not only does it extend into the county-owned right-of-way affiliated with Paces Ferry Road, it also, at all points, reaches over the 36-inch limit for a front yard fence. Any fence reaching in front of the front threshold of a house has to be 36 inches or lower, but this fence, at its highest, reaches four feet and three inches. This is an existing site photo showing the close proximity of the, not only the, the carport, not only to the fence and a rough representation of the property line, but also the close proximity to the neighbor's house, which can be seen on the right side of the screen, just through the tree branches pictured here. This is a front-side representation as well. And then this is a representation of the fence, and I failed to mention, sorry, previously in my explanation of the fence, that there are four of these brick-and-mortar columns lining the front edges of the fence, right up against the county right-of-way, one of which houses a mailbox, which is, you know, less of an issue for the county, but these three brick-and-mortar columns will be, will present a greater issue. Again, so this shows all the, all the fence and all the columns. So, the column to the, of the left driveway that is closer in perspective, yes, in this photo, that is the one that houses the mailbox, and so it will be allowed to stay. However, the other four brick-and-mortar columns, as well as all of the fencing lining the right-of-way, and on the two fences that run perpendicular to Paces Ferry Road, the front 12-foot sections of fence are also going to need to be removed because those extend into the Paces Ferry affiliated right-of-way as well. This is another example. Again, so the, this column, this front section running parallel to Paces Ferry, and then the first section of fence running backwards towards the house, all three of those components of the fence are going to need to be removed, and similarly on the other side. This is a, an addition of the asbill demonstrating the changes in the site that are proposed via the staff recommendation. Part of the conditions outlined in our staff recommendation are to alter the carport, to move it further away from the property line, from the proposed two-foot setback, to honor a four-foot setback at that property line. Additionally, represented are the sections of the fence that will need to be removed, as well as all of the brick-and-mortar columns, except for the one housing the mailbox. The variance application staff has written in a, an approval for the fence reaching above the restricted height to be allowed to remain as long as it is within the property lines. And again, staff's recommendation is approval with the following conditions, and I'll ask that you bear with me, because I think all of them bear repeating in explanation. The first, the first condition that we have is, again, the reduction from the two-foot proposed setback per the application to a four-foot setback written in by staff, and that those alterations take place within 90 days. The next condition has to do with the fence material section of code section 90-144. Front yard fencing visible from the street is not allowed to be constructed of chain link, and has to be constructed of a more aesthetically pleasing material. and has to be constructed of a more aesthetically pleasing material, which this fence is. And so, again, we are just adding the condition that that fence may not be replaced or altered with anything chain-linked or unapprovable materials per the Code Section. Per store, our Stormwater Management Department, downspouts and gutters will need to be installed on the carport regardless of how far from the property line it is, whether it's four feet, two feet, whatever. A property line over there on that side of the house extends into a drainage and utility easement, and so the downspouts and gutters are going to be highly necessary, and it's going to be necessary that those downspouts and gutters direct water, not towards the neighboring property or home. That is actually condition number two under Stormwater. The first condition is the previously mentioned easement encroachment agreements. Again, the carport and the rear storage building or shed in the backyard both extend into a drainage and utility easement, and both of those encroachments need to be put on record with the county, and that's the first condition. The traffic engineering condition down here just states that all the fencing and the three columns that are, don't house the mailbox have to be removed within 90 days of action taken by the Board of Commissioners. And then the final, and also, I think, a pertinent condition to share with you guys is that the carport structure shouldn't be altered without the consultation of the county's Building and Standards Department. This just ensures that no future adverse impact for the neighboring property is constructed without county permission or oversight, as these structures have been constructed without oversight up to now.
We go back to one of the overheads. It doesn't matter, for me, it doesn't matter. Well, let's go back to the, to the one that, that's actual, the satellite photograph. All right. I see a difference in the color of concrete. As I recall, there's only one curb cut for residential.
No, residential are allowed to.
Okay, so did, did they have to get a permit for that second curb cut? Because it looks like that was done after the first.
That is a recent change, and I'll go ahead and say that those permits are sporadic.
Okay. How close is the sidewalk going back to the building? Is that, is that into the setback as well? Because we didn't address that in the variance.
That wasn't, oh, that's how it there?
That, that one.
That doesn't matter. It's a sidewalk.
Okay, doesn't matter.
It's not an above-ground structure, so it, in compliance with Code.
Or how, how far into the setback is the rear building?
I believe it's about three feet into the setback.
Were there any permits drawn for any of this construction?
Again, none of these structures were permitted per, by the county prior to the variance application. They may be in process now, but they weren't at the time of construction.
Is there, I, I didn't notice if there was power in the carport. Is there any need for an inspection?
No, and it, there would have been, uh, conditions related to that, I assume, from the Building Standards Department if there were, but there isn't any biting or power running, you know, being run within the structure of the carport.
So in the narrative, they said they need to be able to keep their vehicles out of the weather. I count four vehicles on the property. Will that structure house four vehicles?
Uh, I believe it will only house, you know, a little, it's going to only have enough canopy space to house two or, uh, two vehicles effectively.
All right. Gentlemen, do you all have any questions?
Back to the picture with the mailbox post. Okay, we're going to let them keep the brick column with the mailbox, but then this one has their street address on it. Are both of these their mailbox?
Yeah. For whatever reason, there's a standalone mailbox here, and then there's also a mailbox constructed into, again, that column right there. I'm not sure what the story is with that. I would think that they would be allowed to use that column as their mailbox, so I don't know what the situation is, um, is with this standalone mailbox for the property.
That's between them and the postal service.
I guess so, yeah.
Point is.
All right. Gentlemen, any other questions? Yes, sir.
Do you have the, uh, head of the Building Standards Department, if you have any questions related to that?
I was going to ask Mr. Scarborough to come up next.
All right.
Mr. Scarborough, you have anything you'd like to add to this?
Very fine job covering everything. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to take any of those.
So I don't need a permit to build just a carport on the side of my house if it doesn't have power to it?
Uh, you would, yes, you would need a structural, a permit for the addition. However, no, no electrical. That was the only thing you would need is just an addition to, and that was.
Look ran out.
Canopy.
Okay, so I couldn't just put one of these on the side of my house without going through the process?
Yeah, we would need to just see some, like I said, some plans on that. Like I said, we would see the site plan as well, wherever it fail, as far as the flight distance from the property lines and stuff.
Would, uh, would you also have to have a ground disturbance permit to do the fence with the columns?
Um, that I would hate to speak to because I'm not sure. I, my answer is no, but I wouldn't think that at 100%.
Why is the column with the mailbox different than the others? I don't quite understand that.
So that, that's a good question. The applicant's here, they can answer that question why they have two different mailboxes.
I mean, what, if we're going to make them move the others, what, what difference does it make with the?
So there, there are plenty of, of columns with mailboxes in them throughout the county.
I understand that, but we're making them move the other columns because they're not in proper setback levels, right? But.
Right away.
But right up, so what difference does it make with the ones got the mailbox?
Has a mailbox in it.
Don't understand. Do you understand what I'm saying?
I'm understanding you, sir.
I don't.
They started out with a mailbox, which, which mailbox they get their mail in, and does the post office determine which one they're going to use?
So they could. That's one of those that we're, we're, we're okay letting them keep this one mailbox. They only get to have one. I mean, they can choose.
Which, which column is the mailbox in? Because I don't particularly see a mailbox. Okay, got it. All right, thank you, sir. Is the applicant here? Yes, sir. Would you like to come up and add anything to the presentation? I think some folks might have some questions here. Please give us your name and home address.
I'm, I'm here on behalf of my father, Rigoberto Mendez. He had to make, he had to go out of county. But I did want to address the mailboxes.
Need your name and home address, please, for the record.
Rigoberto Mendez, Jr.
Okay. All right. And your address?
Uh, my address is 1123 Horseshoe Road.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
I wanted to address the mailboxes because I know there was a question about them. We started with the one in the column, but the post office always missed it. So that's why we put the other one with the numbers big on there. And if we have to remove the other three columns, might, we're going, might as well get rid of that one as well.
Okay.
And just put the standard mailbox over here, more on our side. That's picking up on the mailbox. That's the only thing I had input on.
I understand that you all did the construction on this?
I'm sorry?
Did you all do the construction on this?
Yes.
Okay, are you all in the construction business?
Uh, we do a little bit of.
So you, you ever have to pull permits for anybody? You do construction?
No.
Do construction in Columbia County, you never pull a permit for anybody?
Oh, um, yes, we have. But we work for, you know, I work for a company that pulls their permits, so I just work for them.
Okay, so if you know you have to pull a permit, why did this get done without pulling your permit?
Well, for the carport one, um, like he said, we weren't going to do any electrical or anything, so we really didn't think we needed one. I guess you do have to think about the structural part and making sure it's going good with the compliance of the, what do you call it, the building structure. So, um, we get that part and we understand, so that's why we're here trying to make it right.
Gentlemen, do you have any other questions? Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak either for or against a particular variance? Yes, sir. Please come forward, give us your name and home address.
My name is Dennis Roeth, and I live at 354 Paces Ferry Road, the structure right beside it, where the, uh, structure is. I would like to speak against the structure. I don't know anything about the fencing and all the other things. My concern is the structure. And can I show you, give you some pictures to look at? By all means. Hold there. The first picture is, is from the road that shows where the fence, where the carport ends and where my property begins, and I have a real concern with rain runoff. Already have the driveway and the runoff from that long, it's a whole length of his house, that, uh, carport. And in some heavy rains, I have, my air conditioning unit, which is right beside there, is an island. And I've dug a ditch to try to divert the water away. And you're seeing, it's, it's, it's not a standard carport, it's a industrial steel structure. You know, he, they may not have electricity ran to, but there are lights hanging inside the, the carport area. So, but the rest of the stuff, the fence and stuff, I like his fence, but, but that structure is, is a, it's, it's just right next to my property, and I don't like the way it looks, and I'm concerned about the rain runoff into my yard.
You are experiencing some problem with the heavy rains?
Well, you know.
Runoff?
When he, when he redid the driveway, he sloped it towards my property. So I get the rain off, I get the runoff from the driveway and the runoff from the roof of the carport, and I have had standing water around my air conditioning unit. I have to say, I'm against.
What's county policy?
I'm against the carport.
What is your policy about throwing water off on your neighbor?
Couldn't be able to direct discharge onto it. Now, there is, you know, some inherent sheet flow that will occur from time to time, but intentionally directing is generally, you know, frowned upon. We're trying to make sure that this, in this particular instance, I think there, you know, Dylan mentioned, there's a condition to help mitigate that. But yeah, I mean, obviously, you want to wick it away from your property, but not such that you impact your adjacent property.
Is that a county issue or a civil issue?
Typically, that's going to be more of a civil matter in that regard.
You think gutters are a side of your problem?
First, a part of it. I still have the runoff from the, because they, when they put their driveway and they extended it, made it wider, and, and it's tilted, you know, because the driveway goes right next to it.
That's not coming towards your air conditioning?
Yes, it is.
Even when, since the carport's been built, that seems like that would mitigate a little bit of the runoff from the driveway.
Gutters would mitigate it, but I, I mean, like I said, I've already dug a ditch to divert the water away. I've had standing water around my air conditioning. I'm very concerned about it. Plus, I don't like that structure, the way it looks and the way it's presented.
Wait, we're talking about two different things.
Yeah.
With the, uh, with the gutters, you still think you'd have a problem with too much water?
I won't know until we get a heavy rain.
Well, I guess we'd have to find out, wouldn't we?
Yeah.
How long has, how long has this been here?
I hear June.
When did the carport appear? When?
Nine, then, then nine months or a year. Yeah.
Yeah, the reason I ask is, you know, if you've got that standing water, have you had any increased issue with mosquitoes around your house with that standing water?
I, I'm just concerned about if, you know, if we have a really, really heavy round of air conditioning would be flooded, and that would be a problem.
Thank you, sir. Got a, got a question for staff here. Let's hypothetically say we approve this with conditions. Would that allow the property owner to come back and put walls up without having to come in front of us on that, on that structure? Could he, could he enclose that?
Final condition.
Okay.
Outlined in the condition. Unless they go.
I just want to make sure we've got that covered.
It, it wouldn't come before you, though. You're not going to be, be looking at building permits, so that's what you're getting.
Right. Okay. You know, that, that's my concern, is they haven't bothered to get a permit for anything else, so.
That, that condition is the need of ground construction for the property as well.
All right. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak either for or against this particular variance? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve with conditions to disapprove or to postpone.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to disapprove file VA 22-11-01, variance to reduce the building setbacks and fence height restrictions at 357.
Do your second. Before we vote, can you, Mr. Sterling, could you compare and contrast an approval versus a disapproval? So we've got that on the record for the commissioners.
And I was trying to anticipate if that was the case. Well, I guess, let, let's start with, the, the request is to, um, keep it as, as instructed. The staff recommendation was to pull that from two feet from the property line, carport back to four feet, and then a, a series of other conditions with these encroachment gutters and downspouts, the columns and fencing and all that. So what the request, or the, uh, recommendation that I heard from the planning commission was to deny it. And therefore, they can't have any of it? I, I guess I'm trying to make sure I understand the motion as well. So they can't have any of the, the improvements that they've made? Or they have to, they have to remove the carport? And then the other issues like the fencing and columns and all that would be handled as a matter of county?
Is the intent of your motion for the, the carport and the fencing to come down? And to start over and get things approved the right way?
Well, yes, they should start over. Fencing's going to be handled the other avenue, but yes, it's part of the carport.
I think the, the fencing with, and, you know, the improvements within the right-of-way are kind of a given. I think, you know, I just want to lay the groundwork on that. I think this is just tend to ensure that, you know, you understand that as the planning commission, but the applicant understands that they have to remove those columns and fencing out of the right-of-way and.
Should we handle this as two different motions, one dealing with the fence and one dealing with the structure?
I mean, you can. I think the fence issue is, is the, the stuff within the right-of, go back.
Height issue.
Okay. Uh, yeah, so if you deny it, then are you also denying the height issue with the fence? That's really the other part of it, too. So I'm not trying to make it into, you know, six or seven motions, per se, but at the same time, I want to be very crystal clear of what your intent is so that that recommendation is accurately portrayed to, uh, the Board of Commissioners when they take up this item.
My intent.
Okay.
Fence will be dealt with.
And the height of the fence? What about the, the fence height?
I mean, the.
Seems okay, so can.
I mean, I think you're going to have to either deny it, since it was presented this, it's going to have to be either to approve or deny as a whole. We, I don't think we can break it.
I gotta do this as a whole.
Okay. All right, so motion, uh, seconds to hold? Okay. All right. Um, all right, gentlemen, any other questions, any discussion? Okay, all in favor of disapproval? Okay. Motion is disapproved 5-0, so it'll go to the Board of Commissioners for them to determine how they want to handle it, and they can, and they can break it apart.
They can make, you know, they can take your recommendation or.
Handle it individually per, per item.
However they.
Okay, all right, got it. All right, Mr. Sterling, we do have a text amendment, uh, filed TA 22-11-01, zoning with supplemental requirements.
Yes, sir. So the Board of Commissioners, a couple meetings ago, enacted a moratorium on the application, any new applications for billboards, while staff had an opportunity to look at the current language and address any outstanding concerns with that. We have gone back and forth internally on some items related to that. And so what you have before you tonight is a couple, excuse, a couple minor adjustments to the language in Section 90-135 signs, and that's primarily dealing with the language, talking about compliance. We added words to effect of, and I'll read just kind of as, as it is in there. "No sign shall be placed or maintained on any property, building, or other structure within the county." And the emphasis here will be the new language, whether zoned or unzoned, and in, accepting conformity with these sign regulations. So really, we're adding language that talks about unzoned properties. We don't have a lot of it in the county, but we do have some, and certainly some that have recently had interest for billboards. Looking to address that. We've clarified the language and the definition for commercial. Looking to address that, we've, uh, clarified the language and the definition for commercial as well as industrial. And then again, um, kind of cleaned up some of the language in, uh, section U, which talks about signs allowed by land use category. We took out the, um, use office because that is under commercial and added the word industrial to that. Um, while we were in there, we added, uh, proposed added, posed to add Gateway Boulevard is one of the corridors by which, um, uh, signs along arterial roadways could be considered. Uh, that was just one that we had, uh, while we were in here and had an opportunity. Then most, uh, uh, germane to the billboard sign section, um, section one C, we, uh, clarified the language. Um, it's not the Evans Town Center sign overlay, it's now the Evans Town Center overlay district. So staff is recommending approval to move this forward to the commission so that, uh, they can take final action.
Gentlemen, any questions? Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak, uh, either for or against this particular text amendment? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, to submit to the commissioners, to deny and go back to, uh, staff to correct or to postpone.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve file TA two-two-eleven-oh-one text amendment to section ninety dash one-three-five signs.
Do your second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Most approve and submit to commissioners passes five zero. We have no legal matters. Do we have any staff or commissioner comments?
Uh, just my apologies for missing last meeting. Had an opportunity to fulfill a lifelong dream, go into a Formula One race, so I took it.
Uh, I'd like to take the opportunity to remind folks that voting is still open tomorrow, so please exercise your right to vote tomorrow. If not, the board of elections is closed Saturday and Monday and you'll have Tuesday to vote. So please get out and exercise your right regardless of who you're voting for. Uh, do we have any public comments? Seeing none, I will accept a motion for approval or, uh, for, for adjournment, I'm sorry, or approval, either one. Text amendments, do your second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Most to adjourn at six fifty-two PM. Uh, next meeting is Thursday, November seventeenth, twenty-twenty-two at six PM.